Alright, good evening, we're gonna start our meeting. Thanks for attending. If you can please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no requests to speak in open forums. We're gonna go right to presentations, Mr. Book.
Sure. We actually have a couple to do tonight. Before we get into the sixth grade book presentation, I'd just like to take a minute. Previous meeting, we recognized our retirees, Ms. Monica Gatto and Mr. Craig Norris. And Mr. Norris was unable to attend that evening to a prior engagement. So I know Mr. Norris is here tonight. So, Mr. Norris, we'd just like to take an opportunity to recognize and congratulate you. Tonight, we want to take the opportunity to recognize your accomplishments and congratulate you on more than thirty-seven years of service to the Sydney Central School District. More than thirty-seven years in the Sydney Central School District. Not only that, but to thank you for the thousands of kids that you've educated. Thank you for the commitment to excellence in education as displayed in the Sydney Hometown Parade this year, this last weekend. Thank you for the countless opportunities that you've provided to the Sydney, to the students of Sydney Central School District. So, thank you, and we wish you the best of luck every time, Mr. Norris. And next, we'd like to transition into the sixth grade book project. We'll introduce Mrs. Neal, Mrs. Nichols, Mrs. Dewey, and Ms. Kuchia, sixth grade teachers.
We're gonna line up right along here. Grabbing books and papers.
I'll go first.
You go first?
Yeah.
I'm going first.
I write down. Okay, so, Mrs. Dewey, and I'm through six, I'll take this. This is Deo. And we, every year, we do the sixth grade book project. We go through the writing process and create our books. And I know every year, the board looks forward to seeing the books that they create. This year, we panicked just a little bit because the company didn't send us the kits. Now, the kits are the things where the students actually print right on special paper and illustrate right on the paper. And so, without the kits, they couldn't directly begin the project. So there were a lot of first drafts on scrap paper because we were waiting and waiting, and then they finally arrived, and they were able to continue the project. Yeah, so, for this book project, kids start out, as Mrs. Dewey said, with a rough draft. But before we even get to the rough draft, there's lots of brainstorming, and kids work on graphic organizers, and really organize their thinking, and narrow down their topics. And then again, the process of writing a first draft, which are edited, and re-edited, and edited some more. And we end up with these beautiful finished products that these kids worked so hard to create, as you can see, and you'll see in just a minute. And they do all of their own illustrations. They write their own about the author that they do in the third person. You'll see their pictures in there. And these are just some examples of some wonderful books that kids wrote this year. And we just want to say thank you for continuing to sponsor this activity for kids. It's a great project, they love it. Kids who we have, who have friends we did, and they say we still have the book project, they still have their books from sixth grade. So, thank you for allowing us to continue that. So we'll turn it over to them. You're most excited to hear from them.
Which, by the way, they did working on public speaking.
Yes.
Just recently.
So, fingers crossed. Alright, ready for us, Rock? Okay.
One of my favorite things about creating this book was also the worst part, but the best part, because it was so interesting, but so sad. It's like the...
And you'll hear why this was so sad. Let me hit Sam. Like, what are you challenging?
Um, because of it was so more real than what it actually seems. Like, because it actually happened. And when you guys see before, everything that was very funny, it was through the book, and it makes it really good.
Okay, Scott. Alright, now, say, are you?
Hundred dollars at the top of my book is my journey. My book is about having my knee surgery and how it affected my wrestling. If I had to do this whole project again, I'd do it because it was a very good learning experience for me. And having my knee surgery really affected my sports and how, like, I was active, and then I had to, like, build up all my strength and I can come back up again.
My name is Brian Higley, and the title of my book is The Path to Maryland. It is mostly about my brother's wrestling and the journey of finding it in Maryland. After I published my book, I felt happy because I could think of all the memories and how great they are at wrestling.
My name is Rory Cutting, and the title of my book is Lost in the Spotlight. My book is about four friends who get lost in Hollywood and become famous. One thing I learned about being an author was it takes dedication, but it's tons of fun. Also, your wrist hurts a lot. And it's easier to write in a comfortable space while listening to focus music. That's what helped me the most.
My name is Olivia Mack, and the title of my book is The Sandy Treasure. My book is about Egypt and finding treasure and going on a long journey. The inspiration for my book came from my dad. He gave me inspiration to write it because he's a history teacher.
My name is Xander DeCarlo, and the title of my book is The Virus. My book is about the happy and bad experiences going through the virus COVID-19. One thing I learned about being an author is that it's surprisingly challenging to pick a good story to make a book with.
My name is Ailah Garmo, and the title of my book is Risk. My book is about a princess who is determined to help save her kingdom. If I had to do this project again, I would take more time to develop the side characters and also put more detail into the illustrations.
My name is Erin Newber, and the title of my book is Lost at Sea. My book is about a girl named Iris who went on a fun vacation until one day, women forgot when the ship came along. It all went wrong. The most challenging part of my project was figuring out my names to use. There's many names that I had to choose from, but one of the regular personalities was being her.
My name is Bella Conroy, and my book is called Christmas Dear Father. It's about a girl that... It's about a girl that loves Christmas and loves serving during this house for the family, but gets stuck there from the snowstorm. Creating the illustrations is hard but fun because I got worried about smudging, and it took a lot of time.
Okay, uh, my name is Cameron Regalton. The title of my book is Called The Stainwell. My book is about a twenty-six-year-old person who always wanted to be a pop. And it's not just from the beginning, always leading. I recommend this, uh, I might recommend this project for six years because it's really able to see and explore the characters that are right next to the characters.
Thanks. So, do any of you feel like you might want to be a popper one day? Let us, let you go. You can go. Yeah, spread right out. Knee surgery? Online, maybe, or real, like, my shirt? It was. Sydney? They have it when you're wrestling, right? Or it's like, maybe, yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. It's a lot, it's so much. We do this for hours. Okay. I was a really great fellow. Yeah, this is awesome. Thank you so much for coming. I'm so proud of you. I love that. Okay. I think you came over. Have you seen so much? Oh, I'm shocked. Sorry about that. A lot of writing. Lots of people. Oh, my goodness. So you're all ready. Oh, this one. Is it like a bush? You can tell. Is it like under like a chair? Yeah. Yeah, it was really good.
Um, I... She mentioned, um, because I... That's my question.
Yeah. Yeah. At least we've gotten to put those. You're doing really well. You're, you're, yeah. Hopefully, you're... All the way. I know. And then they can see that they can... Yeah. Because you have it. How are you? I think I was a hundred years. I'm like, oh, yes, we have a lot of... I really... You guys push me. I'm like, oh, I'm... Like, that's...
Yeah.
I was... Knee surgery. Yeah. It was so good. Yeah. Very, yeah. Like, doing that. So, I'm... But I can see it. It's...
And next, we're...
I'm... 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 I'm like, oh, she's... I'm like, oh, she's... I'm like, oh, she's... I'm like, oh, she's... This is hard. What's that? It's hard to see. I'm like, oh, I'm... I'm like, oh, I'm... I'm like, oh, I'm... I'm like, oh, I'm... It's like, wow. It's like, oh, wow. I'm like, oh, wow. I'm like, oh, wow. I'm like, oh, wow. I'm like, oh, wow. Yeah. I'm really sorry. I didn't learn anything. I'm really sorry. No. Yeah. Thank you. Really great. And I'm really proud of you. We're good. You're gonna keep... I know. I like, I like to do it. You're gonna try to do it. You guys are really nice, Bob. Cameron, you sleep? I'm like, oh, wow. Right, when you made it, it's like, yeah. Wow. I don't think so. Yeah. Part of it. It's like, oh, yeah. It's like, oh, yeah. I was like, I guess I'm better. You know, you're big. You're like, oh, yeah. Oh, there's others. Yeah. That's... My kids are like, it's happening. It's like, oh, yeah. Yeah. I'm like, oh, wow. Thanks for... Good job. She's got... I'm like, oh, I'm... I'm like, oh, I'm... Oh, I'm... Yeah. I'm like, oh, I'm... I'm like, oh, I'm... I'm like, oh, I'm... And then you saw, like, you're like, oh, wow. I'm like, oh, I'm...
Alright, so, you're gonna say, where's that?
Favorite part? Um, I don't have... I don't have your brother. I have this thing. I have this school. It's like, oh, I'm so proud of you. Right, I mean, I'm... I mean, I'm... I'm like, oh, I'm... I'm like, oh, I'm... And, um... Yeah. I love it. I love it. That was a good one. You all done? I got you. She's a songwriter. She's a singer. She's my singer. And my... Because Iris, I'm not really good. She was... Yeah.
So, you've moved the music to...
Uh, yeah. I was like, I should write a... 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 I would like to add in... Oh. Then I killed the death of a hurricane. Great job, Brian. Thanks for sharing.
Very good.
Very good. Hello. Very good. Very good.
I'm proud of you. I'm proud of you.
It's like, I'm...
You're great. You're great.
I had a... Right now, it's a little... I'm like, oh, wow. Um... Inspired by the deal of... That part of the talk that you're trying to sit down. See, oh, this is... I'm pretty sure it's like, it's a little tough because there's one... Why? Okay. That's why Dave was... That's great. What I'm reading. I can look at that as well. I'm like, oh, wow. I'm like, oh, wow. I'm like, oh, wow.
That's not fair.
Yeah. You really have to tell it something like that. Oh, I... You got a lot of... Oh, yeah. Yeah. I think it's already... Yeah. I get worried, too. This is so great. There's a great job, great preparing. Have a good summer. Thanks.
Which is it like?
In my shoulder was something that's... And then it was like, wow. I like it.
Oh, wow.
Maybe I... I think it's a job. I think it's a job. And you... I don't know.
Very proud of it. Good.
Very cool.
I thought it said, "We need so much." Sorry. It's pretty uncomfortable.
It's okay. It was awesome. Really great. So, bye, honey. We'll see you.
Now, your brother has a campy Bible.
Carrie, I was saying that our college had a new book because they were in September, or in August. It should be there, like, receipt. It's like the one class in twenty years that hasn't...
Yeah.
Done it. There are little... And they didn't have a flag. They didn't have a ceremony. Yeah. So, I think they get... I would say. Was it over? At least it was. And really, I was... Oh, my gosh. I'm like, oh, wow.
I bet it was, uh...
But I mean, it's like, yeah. You have the mat graduation. It won't be a brat. It's getting to that. I know, you had a birthday that was... And I...
You ordered overnight a couple minutes?
No, I didn't. I didn't have the twenty, twenty-five.
Good work. And that.
It's like, so far away. And then I was like, yeah. Can't read this. Yeah. Yeah. We only got ours to publish. It's like, oh, my God.
You seem really excited.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks so much, guys. We'll be here tomorrow. Alright, we'll let you know. Are they critically talented?
Yeah.
That's my life. Yeah. Thanks so much, guys. Thank you. Thank you. Well, that's important, you know, right?
I'm making my shift. This is a tough, this is a tough follow-up.
Yeah.
But, yeah, just, just to thank...
That was amazing.
Just to thank them. I mean, thank you, Ms. Neal, Ms. Dewey, for what they do.
Yeah.
And to be able to bring back the book project after, you know, the last couple of years of... It's, uh, as you know, it's awesome.
That's amazing. Thank you. That was... And they're very...
Corbin and I have a change for the Capitol Project. We're breaking the console air conditioning. We, there is actually air conditioning. We just, uh, we just tested her, uh, loves her stuff. Yeah. There is air conditioning.
I have to pay for it.
There is, I swear. Um, just, um, I'd like to, as we transition to the Capitol Project presentation, um, I'd like to introduce a couple of people that are here. Uh, first, David Dagnant from Highland Associates. Drew, and I'm gonna try my best, Marcinovich. That's close. Okay. Alright. And, um, from CNS Companies is Tim Weber, Country Conservative Manager for... Um, that's a team. So, the purpose of tonight is to give an overview of the scope of work that we're talking about. Some quick timelines for this is we would like to go to our voters in September for a referendum. Maybe the third or fourth week of September. And then, we would look to do Capitol Project work this summer of 2023. So, not this summer, but for the following summer. Uh, would be the timetable for this. Again, not a referendum in September, set third, fourth week of that. Uh, so, the idea of this is to give an overview of some of the scope of the work, collect any feedback, and go from there. Uh, so, without further ado, uh, I will just kind of, like I said, introduce our partners as we, as we've talked about. Um, some of the needs for the project. And I know, uh, Mr. Dagnant's gonna talk a little bit about that and, um, overview of the project, and then some questions. And our partners also work with fiscal advisors for municipal oversight. And I guess I will turn it over to Mr. Dagnant.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah. Yes, I checked my thick watch.
Yeah.
You set me up. There's no possible way to follow that.
What I have to do.
Sorry. Say, there's gonna be books here, there'll be lives, there'll be kids growing, so, hey, I'll do my best.
I'll be out for passions and, you know, writing rooms.
That's right. Very, very, right. They're, uh, yeah. Writing expression. Inspiration you can use it for. Uh, so, a couple of things. We were asked to explore a few different avenues for different projects. Uh, when we were compiling this list of these potential projects, and I'll call them potential, and you'll see why. Really came down to three categories. So, what we have is we have energy savings, maintenance and repair. There's any district you go to that's gonna have maintenance, repair issues, and deal with. And then we have curriculum and student opportunities. So, you'll see these icons appear throughout the presentation so you can kind of correlate which one of these responds to the appropriate item. So, we're really kind of touching a little bit of everything here. Um, bus garage, the elementary school, junior, senior high school, the athletic complex, and we will elaborate on these projects as we do the presentation. First thing we're looking at is at the Sydney Bus Garage, and that's gonna be removing and repaving the indigenous area. So, when we talk about that, that's what we're talking about. So, we're illustrating, that's the area of painting we're looking to take out and then put back in. It's just a rare material item that unfortunately needs to be redone in recent couple of years. And, uh, I wish Sydney was different, but unfortunately, asphalt here is the same asphalt as anywhere else.
Really holds up this note, huh?
Yeah, it's, it does. And the salt. Yeah. Uh, we're looking at the elementary school now. And playground in place right now is really a three-K-two playground. So, uh, some of the renderings that are done is just possibilities of what the playground could look like. And this is gonna expand it to be a three-K-six playground. And that'd be much more age-appropriate.
And we're looking at doing some things, too, where the asphalt is connecting the kindergarten classrooms and the exterior door from there, um, and wrapping it all the way around where the pod is. And, um, Mr. Dagnant will explain a little bit how that'll connect on the other side, too. So, truly utilizing all of that space in the exterior.
One thing that COVID has taught, you know, this district, and a lot of districts we're working with, is the value of outdoor space. Uh, you know, it's becoming more and more apparent that learning doesn't just have to happen in the four walls of the classroom. These kids really enjoy being outside and inspired by being outside. It really sits in touch with different types of... Um, so, one of the things we were asked to do was just to explore different areas of potential outdoor learning spaces. So, one of them we came up with is a circle that's right behind the elementary school cafeteria. Um, to have some permanent seating place out there. It's kind of seating it around, a little more focused, and then have the sunshades out there so that it's covered, so they can be out there early in the morning, in the afternoon. They'll be protected. they'll be protected, and just a really nice outdoor learning space.
Something that too, when David led kind of the external audit, if you will, of the outside spacing utilization utilization, is that area is used almost every day for recess in some capacity. So how do you dress up an area like that to make it more of an opportunity for student learning?
Yeah, I think that's the one thing we found from that study was a lot of these spaces you're going to see type that we're putting a pavilion or an outdoor learning space were already being utilized as an outdoor learning space informally. We're just kind of reinforcing the idea of giving them the proper tools that they need to make these outdoor spaces as ideal as it can be.
It's funny because I was thinking, I was like, oh, what a great use of kind of wasted space, you know, the center of the circle.
This is one of my favorites. This is in the high elementary school. We're talking about this being an outdoor amphitheater and outdoor classroom. So the gray area to the bottom on the left would be amphitheater seating, and the circle would be a concrete path. So again, it's that focus learning that you can have outdoors. Right now, there's a spill, so for drainage to come in through, we can go ahead and put some rock in there, make that a natural rain garden. Now there's a potential for science experiments and exploration to take place in here. We have some raised planning beds out in the in the open area. There's small group areas, the existing greenhouses there. We have a building create area, park terrace that's out there that has the covering order as well. So there's a number of different activities that can take place out here from one class to multiple classes at the same time, and it's just a great opportunity for that.
As we mentioned, this, if you wrap this right around the pod, right, to connect right into the new playground.
This one is at the end of the parking lot, another area that can be used for a number of different things. So we're just going to look at putting a pavilion up here to be able to get them covered, get them safe, and give the utilities that they need to make this a really nice outdoor area. Some miscellaneous upgrades, replacing and removing and replacing the fuel tanks and pumps that are currently in place. We have some various LED upgrades throughout the throughout the school. So we have LED lighting that's intensive, take that out, a more energy efficient LED lighting. We have some foundation repairs that we would need to make, and then the dehumanification system at the pool. It's just at the end of its useful life, so it's just something that needs to be replaced. It's very important component of the mechanical system, so we're going to replace that as part of this project. The high school weight room, right now, it's there, it's heavily utilized, and it's kind of like this lost gem that's in there. So what we're trying to do here is put some glass in there, really get the activity level up in there, make it more of a showcase piece for these students to really utilize. And then I think about this is we're working with A D and we're putting providers to really supplement what's already on campus. And it's really going to be a duplicate of another fitness area, but something that will fit in in some of the stuff you already have. You guys already have on an housework on campus.
So is this new equipment going in?
Potentially. Yeah, we're going to see what can be utilized. Again, it's part of this ongoing study that we have to see what is really going to be student focused and student interested. So again, we don't want to duplicate what they have, just make something up here that's going to be high use. Really appreciate it.
Interesting kind of even idea as a frame of reference here, right? This wall here is, Mr. Dagnant talked about, is opening this up with openers. This is facing the sort of town, so it's just a block wall now, so you can get some natural light in there. And here taking out the coaches room and the lounge room, we would condense a lender of it down the hall with the custodial closet, which are required there. So just make this a larger area, better utilize the space.
Right outside of the science wings, this is one of the pavilions that we, if you guys have it.
Still do, is it the circus tent?
So again, it's one of those spaces that it's already been used, you know, it's proven that it's a great outdoor space. So what we're talking about doing is putting in something very similar to what we see here in the illustration, a thing like that. We're looking at even something pre-fab. So you basically purchase a kit from a manufacturer, we're exploring everything because the cost of materials right now, it's everything is on the table. But again, it's a matter of getting Wi-Fi, optimal power, data, those types of things to really make this just a spectacular place for students. Tennis courts, anybody who's been over at tennis courts know that they need some DLC. Yes, yeah. You know, it's a fairly heavily used area and certainly can be redone. So we're going to look at the drainage sets here, reconfigure them so they don't have the moisture issues that they have right now. And homework. While we're at it, we're going to add a bit of work right now in talking to them. They need five courts is ideal for the needs that they have. Otherwise, they have one team that's waiting for somebody else to finish. So one thing we're going to do is add a bit of work here and then everybody just wait the same. One thing we learned about Sydney is you have one of the most impressive adapted PE programs in the state. It's amazing what's being done with physical education. This building here, we put up on the flat, so on the athletic fields, we're looking at having a girls and boys changing area for adapted PE to go up there to utilize the track, utilize the fields that are up there and just, you know, take every opportunity that's available. The other thing we're looking at is using that center area as an adapted PE classroom and an MFA classroom. So we have the community gardens, which are short distance away. So we think that this building here will be heavily utilized by not just the adapted PE, but also the MFA program.
So those would be used for like locker rooms for sporting events too? Is that the idea?
Potentially they can, yes.
I was going to say. That's something about the cross drive.
Yeah, that's something we looked at. You know, our priority is going to be on the educational side first. So if we can take a look at that and see how this can be used for those types of activities, certainly, S D will look more very roughly upon something like that than just a sports venue.
You know those long jump nets?
They are, correct. Yep.
So look at putting it back up against the second fence facing out towards the grass field, kind of the right right field of the softball field. Still make them super accessible, but to maximize still all over your playing surfaces. Is that going to eat up any of that field space?
Very. For like. Maybe 25 feet off of the existing building or off of the existing fence line, not much. And I think that was the idea. And we showed us a number of different locations, and administration came back and said, can we look at this back and really maximize not all the streets that we have. It's all new and district own batting towers. We know the district has some batting towers that just need to be kind of replaced. So while we're at it, looking at baseball and softball, not being much of a pattern of this.
What was the permit?
Yes. Upgrade lighting of the fields to LED. Looking at using the existing poles that are there, but the lighting that's up there is not as efficient as an LED fixture would be. So looking at replacing those with the LED fixtures and then potentially lighting the tennis, baseball, and softball fields with the LED lights as well. Game days are here. Just wanted to start. Are you sure?
That's very true.
To be better. So the area that's on across the street from Sydney right now is a lot of community gardens. We looked at replicating another parking lot side as we have up there now. So we're looking at potentially getting another nine cars on this site and orienting it. In such a way that would still allow for a good sized community garden area as well. So you don't lose that. Important part of the curriculum and community as well.
Well, then there are discussion about moving the tennis courts up there to get the community access.
There was lots of discussion about moving the tennis courts up there. Yeah. For community accessibility.
Yeah.
That's really what it was is when we were in. That was my number one choice, right? When we initially looked at it, but when you looked at the accessibility for kids, right? And you see how often it's used, not only for recess on a daily basis, but accessibility for student athletes, right? To be able to get up there, right? Just the amount of time seems silly, right? To go across the street while they have practice. Yeah, but you're talking about our kids going to drive up there for after practice and then walk back down after practice. And then there's no accessibility for kids during the school day for the recess, and then our PE classes use it almost every day outside. So when you look at the full package of accessibility, it really makes sense to keep it right where it's at.
We did the first part of this was that study, utilization study, to look at the sports fields and the outdoor spaces as well. And that was, you know, one of the assumed things was looking at the tennis courts across the cross. And then as we dove in deeper and just started talking to the teachers, and you could hear about how much those tennis courts are very hard to use, it's one of the only dry areas they have. So it's as much as they're utilized, especially now that we get extended.
I don't think anyone's going to complain about more parking up there.
No.
And then we have, over at Masonville, we have some of these projects that converting propane, so we're going to take out the underground fuel tanks. Boilers are in need of replacement pumps and then mechanicals. We get some mechanical controls. Yeah, I'm sorry. So I mentioned potential projects. So one of the things that we'd like to do with our district is really go through a list of what's needed. And we take a look at that, we start to prioritize things. We like to do that before the cost, and then because you'd be surprised how much money has an influence on whether something's a priority or not. So as I said, right now, these were the higher priority items that we're investigating. Tim and his group with CNS, they're working on the estimate. As we speak, so you're going to see me again presenting to you the estimate and what these approximate dollar value will be. What we call potential items because we don't know what the market's going to be. We have contractors now who aren't holding prices for more than two weeks at a time. The market's so volatile. So what we did is, we've been doing this for a long time before this inflation started to happen, is with projects like this, we always like to have alternates. So you may have your list of items, let's say there's 26 items, and realistically we need for 22. So we'll go ahead and we'll pick, you know, 10% or 15% above that, and we'll do this called a panel. So what that means is if you get good numbers on bid day, you may get to do more work than you thought you could. And it's cheaper to do it that way than it is to have a contractor price it up later because they know that, you know, unfortunately, you're under the mercy because of the drawing of the board. So it's something that Highland's been doing for a long time. It's worked through our clients of damage in the past, and we're certainly, your interests can come in with the work I'm going to do. So again, this is the ideal list of projects. Some of these might make it, some of these might not make it, but because they've been identified more of a cost for the panel, even if they don't make this project, they jumpstart for the next project, it's still priority. We know what the item is, and we have an idea of what the cost is as well. That's it.
How long is this project? A soon that's not like all done in months, it would be torn up around here. So is it a five year plan?
It's going to depend on the final scope of work. I'll say that because there are some items that you can start, you know, if it's on the support of a building, or you can start demolition, it's not a student, you know, activity, you can start demolition sooner. You know, but that's going to be all determined once we find out what the final scope of work is.
And ideally, summer of 2023, but depends on when you can take over buildings earlier. Like, you know, for example, you know, tomorrow we start the renovation upstairs of the junior senior high school for the air conditioning, right? And the HVAC and control. So the sooner you can take things, but ideal ideally both in September, start work, spring of 2023, and see how we can probably get for this summer of 2023.
I think when you're going out to bid is a very good time because, one, it's contractors gearing up for that coming season, so they're going to be contractors who are hungry, you know, and are going to say that should be the best time to get good price on things. But also, it really gives them time to get a plan, you know, to be most effective for getting in here, getting the schedule, getting one of the items ordered and acquired. So right now, it seems we're falling into a very good, very good time.
How do you plan for the continuance because the, yeah, because it's such a volatile market, you know, obviously, we want the best price we can, but we're not going out, and you said you're not holding prices, like, how do you calculate that now?
It's.
I don't want the details. How do you calculate that? Generally, I know, I think that's going to be my question too. I mean, that is doing four more increases the rest of the year. I mean, God only knows what's going to happen next year. Like, I know they're trying to catch up, but.
It's.
Even cases what happens in September, not by next year.
This market is. Unpredictable isn't a right word.
Yeah.
Even if you look at something on a residential scale, you'll get a pressure tree of lumber deck, you know? Two weeks ago, you know, a board was $15. Well, last week in Home Depot, it was $9.80, you know? So some prices are coming down. We have a number of, we have a big science when we're going for, everything's being redone. Well, we got a notice saying that if we didn't place an order, you know, within that about two weeks' period, that epoxy resin tops were going to be, you know, six months out of round. It's like, it's stuff that's unheard of. So how do you plan for it? It's this kind of, it's difficult to do, but I think putting those alternates in kind of really puts out a realistic project, what you know you can afford within plus or minus a few percentage, and then those add alternates would really help to try to back some of the levels in.
David, this might be a good question. When we approve, if the project gets approved, are we stuck in a timeline? Like, it has to be done within, you know, two days? Like, it gets pushed, I hope this is a thing that'll, if something gets pushed out because of that, are we in a situation like this got approved and we need to use it within a timeframe?
You have five years, right? You have five years once the project's approved. Time is on our, this whole process, and this has been great with Highland really coaching and Tim Weber with CNS is really coaching us, is looking at your timeline of really slowing it down, right? Doing your drawings properly, really vetting out the process, doing your analysis of, you know, utilizations of space and what we've done up to this point. But then it's like what they've talked about is going out to bid at a favorable time, right? Taking, you know, do we do a phase one in summer of 2023 and then do a phase two of summer of 2024? We've gotten, right, this goes with the work. So we have some flexibility with what with what the plans.
Yeah, because like, how does that work too? So if we go out to vote in September and we say, this is, you know, based on the quotes that we've received, this is what we can afford, and then these are our add-ons. But then the following summer, when we go to do construction, and God forbid, even those things are way outside of that scope of cost, do like, how does that work with the voters who voted for like this amount of work and maybe that's no longer within the scope of what we can afford?
So the good thing about bidding, most likely, we'll try to go out on a good bid atmosphere. So if we go out between December and January, once the contractor bids on the project, they have to do it for that price. So they can't actually come back and ask first, ask us for more money. The only way they can is if we put a clause in the front end documents that they can. What example would be the escalation in your asphalt index? So a lot of contractors write out how vital the oil prices are. We put that index in the front end, then we can see where they are during September and when they actually bid the project, and then see when they actually put it down, see what's the difference in pricing. But typically, when it comes to any of the work that's scheduled for this project, we wouldn't be putting those clauses in, and we'll just let the contractor bid it what they see now, and then they'll start ordering all the materials as soon as they get their contract. So we don't have the increases in all the, all the construction costs that would apply. So our main goal would really be trying to get out to bid at a favorable time before those increases keep on continuing.
I think some of the things we're seeing is not so much the cost of items, it's the availability of projects. So I think that's where, you know, the schedule is in our favor right now because, you know, we're not trying to get this out right now, get it built by a certain time, a decent time or so.
So the burden really falls on the bidders then?
Correct.
And that's, and that's typical. It's usually with Capitol Projects, it's always falls on the bidder, and they have to adjust their prices as they see.
You said you like had conversations like about the tennis courts. So have the staff and faculty all seen this plan? Have they weighed in on their feeling about outdoor space? Have they seen, other than tonight, have they seen any type of this presentation?
Do you want to talk a little bit about?
Yes, that's, this was all driven by the administration of principals and vice principals on these levels. So all the coaches, they got collective. They knew we were coming up. They were asked to go and talk to their staff and figure out.
We had four, four or five different committees that they met with over a course, a couple days, that were made up of just a variety.
Okay, I just want to make sure we got input and.
Oh, yeah. We'll get as granular as you want us to, but a lot of times, it's, it's got to be a collective.
Yeah. Yeah, as long as people had an opportunity to get feedback.
Yep. Yeah, good feedback too.
Good? Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you so much.
Not as exciting as the security work project, but I mean, it's exciting.
Are you, are we doing S T A first or are you jumping to it?
S T U.
Yeah. Did you see those, see those, how they have these for public speaking? And that's not the job they went for. It's good to be able to be a good public speaker. So S T A, in the spring, we voted on our teacher of the years, and we voted on Melissa Williams, special education teacher here in the high school, and Monica Gatto, our current librarian. Very, very, you're not going to say my name? We were having a whole chat. I told him it was going to be eight and a half minutes. So Monica and Melissa, and they will be honored at our banquet, which is on Saturday night at Club 55. I know we've been to our banquets before, they're fun. And we will also be honoring Monica and Greg Norris for their retirements at the banquet. So after eight years of being the S T A president, I am now stepping down, and Michelle Lyon, our third grade teacher, will be the president, and Brian Newbert is the vice president. So it's been, I appreciate all the support and all the welcome that I've gotten coming to the board meetings. However, I don't think I'm going to be coming anymore. Passing it over to them. So who knows? But thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for your dedication and support. You'll come for book night though, right?
Oh.
Okay, back to Mr. Book.
Sure. Paul, just thank you on behalf of my experience of transitioning into this job, is the collaborative process that we've had, not only negotiating contracts, but just talking and being a P L C, right? In that, in that sense too. So I would appreciate it that. So thank you both. Just a couple, couple of updates. Last night, the mayor, Maviak, presented the village board meeting, community swim calendar. because the community pool's not going to be open in the village. So we worked together about building a community swim schedule. So I just want to thank Tony Stenna, Jim Carl, Danielle Hoyt, who is our head lifeguard at our pool, for coming up with the schedule. So not only we're going to have lap swim from six o'clock to seven thirty in the morning that day. So you're more than welcome to come to that Monday through Thursday. But just putting your calendars together. But it's, it's also used every day for our summer enrichment program. So it's tough to open up to the community in that sense when we use it from eight to three for summer enrichment. So that's still open for kids, sign up for our camps, right? And then be able to come to utilize that. We're also going to open up a community swim at night Tuesday and Wednesday from six to eight. We're going to do it also on Friday from eleven o'clock in the mornings to four o'clock on Friday. And then, excuse me, after summer camps are over. So we're really talking about June, or I'm sorry, August, night to August nineteenth. Or the extended, the extended two weeks after the summer enrichment ends. We're going to continue the lap swim and then we're going to go to a Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, eleven AM to four. Because camps are done, we can do it during the day, eleven AM to four for the community swim. So I just wanted to share that piece. Next thing I'd just like to share is we'd like to thank the Girl Scouts. Each year the Girl Scouts chooses organizations or individuals to donate cookies at the end of their season cookie sales. So the Girl Scouts selected the Sydney Central School District and stated that the staff who have made a difference in their lives during the challenging times, we'd like to thank our staff. So they donated cookies. So we'll be putting boxes of Girl Scout cookies in break rooms and things tomorrow. And who doesn't love Girl Scout cookies?
They're extended, you know.
Samoas, they named them after. So. So we're going to, I'll try to, I'll put them up first. Just a break room. So I just want to thank the Girl Scouts organization.
Okay.
Yep, very cool. And the Girl Scouts really identified is teachers and staff making their difference in their lives. I want to give that.
That's great.
Very cool. Just a couple of upcoming events, just to mark on your calendars. I know I've talked about it for a little bit. But graduation, Saturday, the twenty fifth, at ten o'clock. If you can't make it, I assume everybody's going to make it, but if you can't make it, just, you know, like Carrie know or myself know, but that is ten o'clock. We'd ask that you be there no later than nine thirty on that day. And we'll have graduation gowns up there ready for you to just go on. There's a senior breakfast in rehearsal. The senior breakfast is really cool. It's on Friday, the twenty fourth. It's in the cafeteria that starts at nine o'clock. Mr. Hanson's end of the year assembly up on the alumni field for the elementary is on the twenty third at eight forty five. That is a well attended event. If you haven't ever been to that, there are a lot of people. And it's a really cool thing. And an extra parking lot would absolutely be beneficial if you live here, but not going to have. And then on June twenty third, there's a senior walk through in the elementary, some senior lunch and activities and the senior parade. We're going to do that again in the village. That is on the twenty third and that will start at one o'clock here from the high school. And it'll be the same route as what we've done, relax. Twenty first, sorry, I said twenty third.
Yes.
Sorry, twenty first. Twenty first, the same, same route that we've done before. We'll arrange here, organize up here in the school lot. We'll drop down West Main Street through the center of town, like left down to River Street, left down to Union Street through City Federal, by City Federal Credit Union, back up to Pearl Street and then back up to. So we're excited to be able to do that again. So for enrichment camps and the sports camps, they'll begin on Monday, July eleventh. They'll run through August the ninth, with over a hundred eighty kids signed up. And that's kids coming into kindergarten through sixth grade. The enrichment program will be housed out of the junior senior high school for the summer. A couple of other things to note is the reorganizational meeting. Thank you very much for your feedback on that. We'll plan for Tuesday, July fifth, right? For our reorganization, our reorganizational meeting at six thirty. Board of Education Retreat Work Session, we'll plan to do what we did last year, I think worked well, is before the August ninth meeting, we'll do a work session prior to that, do a dinner, work session, present the goals, you know, get your feedback. So we'll plan to do it prior to work session, prior to the August ninth board meeting.
Like the night of early or like week before?
No, we'll do the, unless we did the night of the board meeting, we just did early, we did dinner. Yep, then we did a work session. That works for everybody. We can do the same type of thing. We'll do dinner, do a work session, just tie it in the same board meeting night. That works for everybody. And I'll send more information on that once we, once we get there. Today, Dark Angel and company began their audit. They were on site today and they'll be on site for the next two days. And then they'll present their audit in either September, October. They're a little bit earlier this year than what they had come on campus of. And they look for the September, but we'll see how that falls. Today was the last day for regular classes for grades seven through twelve. Regents exam will begin tomorrow, run through Wednesday, June twenty second. And just want to take a quick second and show you just a couple. Sorry. Just a couple of photos from some of the events that occurred. And it's nice to be able to have great opportunities for kids like this. I just want to thank Ms. McNamara, Ms. Rogan, a whole host of teachers, especially right here off the bat, Renee Stent, doing her work, Courtney DeMore and her work, it putting together a seventh grade trip to Albany. And it's great to give, you know, kids opportunities to be able to do some of these things. So the eighth grade trip to New York State Museum. Our history two oh two class, under the leadership of Catherine Degaschino, took a trip to Mount Vernon, might be the longest one day trip we've ever seen. I don't know how to describe that any other way. They left super early and they got back super early. And they did things to coach us. We did not allow them to try and scoop us and all that.
They go on school the next day too.
Yep.
Wow.
I think they got back like one thirty in the morning or something.
It was like closer to two.
Closer to two. But a great, great experience, Paul. There you go.
Yeah.
Every second. Senior trip was this last weekend. Had a great time in Baltimore. Good road trip for, for Ms. McNamara and Ms. Rogan to be part of that class. Had a lot of fun.
A lot of hair, yeah.
Just another really cool event, just to highlight, is under the leadership of Mr. Yurka, the SAD, so Sydney Students Against Destructive Decisions, what they call things and littles. This is your older, older SAD kids that pair up with sixth graders and act as mentors and do a few days in barbecue at the end of the year. And we just had great weather for our end of the year events that were pretty remarkable. And then today, I believe.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, today, right? Seventh, eighth grade field days up on the field, which again, just cool opportunities for kids to end the year on. So, and again, great weather. That is not Photoshop, that is the weather. So we, we very fortunate in some ways. So just want to share, share, share a couple of things, just the end of the year.
Share the senior pranks from the.
The swimming? Oh, yeah, that was. So the seniors. Billy here. Did a prearranged senior prank. Well thought out, well thought out. Is they wanted a pool party. And so with a pool party, you need to make sure you have lifeguards and, right? Plan accordingly. It was actually really well received, right? Ms. McNamara.
They brought employees and. Wow.
They had lots of dancers. But it was, it was cool. Ms. McNamara got pizza afterwards and it just, it was cool amount of dancers.
That's great.
Yep. And they did it respectfully and they did it with what I would call high shake.
That's awesome.
Yep.
You didn't get a gift?
What's that?
You get a gift?
Did I get a gift?
Day or is that a winner?
Wait, what?
Well, sometimes your vehicle or office.
Oh, no. No.
Still early.
The post note was corollary. No. I did not. And then the last thing that I, that I.
Sorry, I give ideas.
Thank you. Is the Crystal Project, which is part of the project that will start now for their federal funds, the scope of the work in air conditioning in the upstairs of the junior senior high school that begins tomorrow. And then the upgrades to our HVAC controls, which will align all of the control controls throughout the district on one platform. Now, we're about ninety, ten, now ninety percent are all ongoing controls and the ten percent on the other, another, another platform. So they will be all aligned, which is, which is great. Yep, I'll give you a smile. And.
Good. Any questions? Lots of activity, lots of things to do.
Absolutely.
Very cool. All right. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the meeting from the regular board of education meeting, sorry, the minutes from the regular board of education meeting held on May tenth, twenty twenty two. So. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the personnel consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
I'd just like to take a second and just introduce two new staff members that are here this evening. I'd like to introduce Julie DeCarlo, who will be joining our elementary team. And I'd like to introduce Rebecca Wagner, who will be joining us for a seven, twelve ELA. So we're excited. Julie comes from Franklin, Central School District, right in that early. And Rebecca comes from GMU. Charlotte Village, sorry. Sorry, Charlotte Village, joining our team, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sorry, Rebecca. So welcome, thanks for being here.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the vote and election results for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year. Oh.
Change it up. Keep the audience guessing.
She said it from west.
It was Tom.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the board of education meeting dates of twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year as presented.
Just want to quickly, just want to note that the reorganization meeting will be Tuesday, July fifth. The meeting dates from last year set a tentative one for that. And when we talk about the twelve, just make sure that Tuesday, July fifth. Okay. So.
Is that person second? Okay. I'm all of them. They were retired. Okay, I think it's nice.
I go second. We're starting to get a little.
Resolved upon the recommendation that the superintendent of schools to approve the overnight field trip to the Aswagatchie Educational Center Summer Camp Program being held July thirty first through August fifth, twenty twenty two. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie? Been on board a long time.
Multiple times a year.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the contract addendum between Sydney Central School District and the Sydney related personnel organization due to the existing error in the secretary column of the salary schedule, Article eighteen, salary schedule. Any discussion?
As I mentioned in the weekly update, this is, it's actually been there in a couple of contracts. And Mike Pavolovich and Nate Schultz, who nicely found it. And it was after we had already approved the SSRPO agreement. And it's off by a few cents, but it's an opportunity to just correct it, just be done with it. So, yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the prereglemented Services Agreement twenty twenty two between Sydney Central School District and Highland Associates Architectural Engineering Design PC for architectural services. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Board member comments?
I'll go.
Oh, I don't know, I don't look like I'm going to say something.
I don't know. So last week, we had the hometown day parade and we celebrated Sydney's two hundred and fiftieth birthday. And so thank you first and foremost, the school for allowing us to utilize your facilities. But it was the best weekend of my life. I mean, Main Street was so packed and everyone was just so energized and it was so much fun. And I mean, when I saw those, when I saw SFCU turn the corner in their bright green shirts and then the marching warriors were right behind them, they just like lit that whole street up. And it was, it got me on the feels. It was wonderful. And Mr. Norris had sent me an email a couple of days before. And he's like, what's the contingency plan for rain? I'm like, there is no contingency plan because it's not going to rain. So all week long, people are like, what can I do? I can't be there, but is there anything? I'm like, you can just pray to whoever, whatever you believe in, the plant, the tree, the chair. Like, no rain. And it ended up being a beautiful day. And thank you, Mrs. Dewey, for bringing your interact kids. And we learned a lot of valuable lessons. We're hoping to kind of make an annual full day of stuff going on. So, but it was, it was a great, it was an amazing event. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Well, excited for graduation. Let me know if you're not able to come, I think everybody is. So, yeah, June. Both presentations and graduation?
Best month of the year.
All right. Okay, nobody else? We'll move on. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to move into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or a corporation or matters leading to the appointment or employment of a particular person or corporation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Okay. Thank you for coming. Have a great night.
Have a good night.